Recording in progress.
Meeting, fiscal committee, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We comply with the meeting laws. We are recording tonight's meeting at this time. I just have a moment of silence.
And we'll be observing that for all those who serve in the military and for those who help to protect us.
Thank you. Sarah, could we have a roll call of attendance?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. DePaola?
Present.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Ms. Scofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Twelve present.
Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left. Vice Chair.
All set.
Grace Schofield?
All set.
Sam Shumsky?
Yes, I have a few. One, I just want to say I went to the Litwin School Open House last Thursday. I had a great time seeing all the students and staff. I also want to thank Mr. Dave Amo for his generous donation of donating teachers' school supplies one night at Staples. And I also want to say that this Friday MSC in Chickapi is hosting a manufacturing day for the students of the Advanced Manufacturing Technologies class at Chickapi Comp. And I'm looking forward to going there and seeing the facility with the students and the teachers. Thank you.
Chat?
All set.
Who'll go to my right?
All set, Mayor.
All set. Sandra?
Just, I'd like to say thank you to the teachers in honor of today, which is happy, which is World or International Teachers' Day. So, thank you to everyone who provides education to the students in our school system. Also, to recognize the physical therapists who work with our students because this is National Physical Therapy Month. And also, just to bring to everyone's attention that on October 13th, there will be a meeting of the Education Committee of the City Council. This was something that was put forth at Tuesday evening's meeting by Ward Nine City Councilor Mary Beth Pinia-Castello with an invitation to the school committee. And the purpose of the meeting is to discuss drivers violating the school bus stop sign with regarding people in their vehicles passing the bus or not stopping when the children are getting off and on the bus. So, she wanted to have a meeting with the Education Committee of the City Council and the school committee. And I believe the formal invitation was sent out today, and Mr. Morton acknowledged receiving it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tim? All set. Salo?
All set, Mayor.
And Ron?
All set.
And Dave?
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. I just have something really quick I wanted to share that October 13th, we'll be recognizing Polish heritage here in the city of Chickapi at 10:00 a.m. right here in front of City Hall. For all of those of Polish descent who'd like to join us as we recognize Polish Heritage Month, please join me again. That's Thursday, October 13th at 10:00 a.m. And I'd like to also, I just want to vote for the committee to let you know about our search focus group sessions. The Chickapi Publics...
Chickapi Public Schools will be conducting focal groups to determine what you would like to see in your next superintendent. The first one will be Saturday, October 15th, at Chickapi Comprehensive High School. Location would be in the teacher's cafeteria at 10:00 a.m. We'll also be having one on Monday, October 17th. That'll be at our central admin office on Dulong Circle. That's at 9:30 a.m. And also, we'll be hosting another one, I believe, at 10:15 a.m. Again, at the central office. One will, I'm sorry, one's for the staff and one will be for the admins. Chickapi High School, same day, we'd be hosting for, in our cafeterias at Chickapi High, at 2:30 for teachers, grades nine to 12; 3:30 for principals and administrators; 5:30 for parents, guardians, caregivers, grade six to 12; and 6:15 p.m. for ELL, parents, guardians, and caregivers. Tuesday, October 18th, at Chickapi Comprehensive High School, location cafeteria. At lunch, we'll be hosting the high school students. At 3:30, we'll be teachers, grades pre-K to five; 4:30, teachers, grade six to eight; 5:30 p.m., parents, guardians, caregivers, grades pre-K to five; and 6:30 p.m., special education, parents, guardians, and caregivers. If you're not able to attend, please, we can also provide you with survey if you want to contact central office. Those are my announcements, and I will now turn it over to superintendent for public announcements.
I just have a quick announcement, Mayor. From the last grants update, we realized that we had the presumption that people kind of understood what we were saying when we talked about Title I, Title II, or different grants. So, moving forward, we are going to change our grant updates format and give a little information about our particular grants so people in the public can be more informed along with school committee. Because when we just mentioned title names or different names of the grant, people have no idea what the actual grants are and what they're being used for. We just put the money amounts. So, moving forward, the grants update format will be changed to give a little bit more information to keep people informed about how grant monies, taxpayers' monies being spent within the school district. And that's it, Mayor.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Superintendent. Yes, Sandra Perret.
With regards to the dates and times that you provided, will that be on our website as well as in the paper?
Website.
And can we have an email with the dates? Because there were many of them that went out, and just so the public knows as well.
Just asked that question, and it just sort of...
Sure. The schedule for the focus groups will be posted on the Chickapi Public Schools website. It'll be on the Facebook page. It'll be sent to all parents. It'll be sent to all people who have a Chickapi Public Schools email account. And that'll happen tomorrow morning. And maybe the mayor's office will even post it on the city's Facebook page and...
Definitely, we will.
Thank you. And on their website. So, people should be able to find the information.
Thank you, Becky. Any other questions or comments? Public input. Speakers shall identify themselves with their name and address. Public input sessions have a limit of 30 minutes or three minutes per speaker. Speakers come first serve, first come, first served. Character assassinations and derogatory attacks will not be tolerated. And we have one person who signed up for public input. It's Lisa. Welcome.
Lisa Bienvenu, well, welcome. Bienvenue. 34 Everett Street in Ward Nine. I want to thank her for putting on the microphone because I'm in the hall and I couldn't hear a word you were saying until she put it on. I actually went to the facility subcommittee meeting last week because I was interested in what you were looking to do with the school admin building and about Annaberry. I guess I'll start with Annaberry first because it's been talked about building a new Annaberry or doing something with that school for a long time. And I find it very concerning how long it's taken. And I find it extremely concerning because in the paper, it talks about all of the asbestos in the building, which it's talking about the tiles on the floor, the mastack around the window frames, in the ceiling. And in one article I read that it said it was crumbling. And I believe the director of maintenance, Mr. Chapdolane, said they had to seal it up when the inspection went through, that they were required to seal it. And crumbling asbestos, I heard that, and I thought friable asbestos. So, I certainly hope that the school committee and the city council is finally going to act on Annaberry and look at what the state recommended, that they said you even think about building a larger school than what you have, because I know that was discussed there. We can't ignore the young children. And all of the buildings, school buildings for the young children are very old. They're maintained, but they're very old. And you have to be a voice for the young ones as well, which is what struck me when the discussion was about a possible location for the new admin building, which was 350 Memorial Drive, or the Taj Mahal, as I like to think of it. That building is huge. And I realized they were saying that they could use $8 million of ESER money, which I didn't really understand what ESER money was. But after that meeting, I looked into it, and that's money that the city's been awarded really as the three grants, and you've gotten more money each time to help the children, to help the children improve the atmosphere, to protect them from COVID, and to keep them from falling behind is kind of the general overview of what I look at that ESER money is. And it's $8 million for a building that's three times the size that you need for the offices for the admin building, which I realize everybody was very excited and excited about freeing up room at Chickapi Comp if you move some stuff out of there. And there was a lot of excitement, a lot of excitement for the high school children. But I would like to hear that kind of excitement for the young children because Annaberry School cannot continue with those kind of conditions that I'm reading about in the paper with the asbestos. So, I do hope everybody takes that into consideration because ESER money isn't free money. It's taxpayers' money. It's all of our money. It's just not coming from the city, but it's coming from all of us. And I hope it's being used to help our children and help the teachers in the trenches who have worked diligently these past two years. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public input. Visitors, unscheduled approval of minutes 22-10-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on September 21st, 2022 be approved.
Susan, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports 22-10-2.
Report on personnel action. I'd like to acknowledge two people, retirements. Mary Chevalier, Special Education Teacher, Fairview, 22 years, nine months, effective 11/9/2022. Linda Hardburger, Cook Manager, Bellamy, 37 years, effective June 16, 2023. Thank you both for your service to the Chickapi Public Schools, students, and their families.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Don?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive.
I have a question.
Susan is next, and then you, Sandra. Susan?
I just want to quickly comment on those two women who are retiring. We're so fortunate to have them all those years working hard with our schoolchildren. And secondly, Superintendent, we've had a lot of positions, I've noticed, on the appointments. We've made a lot of hired, hirers lately. We've hired a lot of staff. In a good many of those staff members that we've hired have been paid for by the ESER grants. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right. I noticed this evening that we're hiring a Zatella preschool paraprofessional and also a drafting teacher.
Correct.
So, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
It was wonderful to see that we had 13 appointments, but there were also 17 resignations on that list. And some were for individuals who have been here only for months at a time, three months, four months, one month, five months. It's a combination of people, a sped teacher, office assistant, a library tech, a paraprofessional. Just curious, was there any trend when we do the exit interview? Because it just seems odd that we would have so many people with such a short time with us.
I think when we look into it, a lot of people, like the office assistant, transferred to the city side, so people had other jobs. So, I think people applied for multiple jobs, and when other jobs came open, then they actually moved to other jobs in that particular piece. A lot of people moved to other places.
The paraprofessionals as well as the...
Correct. A lot of people just, you know, either moved from para to another position in the district, or they moved to go to some other district.
Okay. Because they resigned, so I assume they left our system.
Correct.
Okay. It's just a lot of time and effort. Sad.
I agree. We're still trying to fill some of the positions that are necessary and that are needed.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. 22-10-3.
Report on the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee.
Buildings report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Damage to buildings report.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Any discussion?
Here.
Sandra?
Just that some of the damages to the buildings were, at the academy, there were broken windows, fire extinguisher, glass window protection cover was broke. One of the schools, Bellamy, had graffiti on the inside of the building, I'm assuming. And another school, Strieber School, had a broken window. The Seddellis preschool had a broken window in the gym. So, for a total cost of $2,514.20 for all the damages, which is minimal considering there are many schools that had no damage at all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, we have a motion to receive. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 22-10-4.
Now, report of the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. Any discussion? Tim Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee met on September 28th. We had a number of topics for discussion. The first thing that we discussed was the student involvement and decision-making. So, the Student Advisory Council was sort of reformed. They just held elections. We got students from Chickapi Comprehensive, Chickapi High School, as well as the academy. So, we have a diverse spread of students from across the district. And we sort of are just figuring out how we can better work with them. Next bit of discussion was on the gate receipts and admissions fees for sporting events. There was some discussion about the potential for going free or reduced fees for a period of time, but we decided that we wanted to work with the SAC to try to pull students to see if we would get attendance up at sporting events so that we could feasibly lower fees and still keep the revolving funds filled with cash so that, you know, we could pay for maintenance, for ambulances, security guards, all those things. And the last little bit of business we had was routine approval of policies, which you'll see later on the agenda. We'll be taking our first reading on those. Most of it was just cleaning up the legalese and simplifying the language a little bit and bringing the policies in line with other districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 22-10-5.
Report of the Facility Subcommittee.
Tim, can I, I'm sorry. Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. Any discussion? Don Lamoth?
Yes, we discussed the Annaberry School, where we're at in the process. We also discussed 350 Memorial Drive. And we asked that we get set up with some sort of tour so the rest of the school committee could actually tour the building. And that's where we are at this point.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sandra?
Just that with regard to the future location of the school administration building, it is on file that I voted no. And I voted no because I wanted us, before we pushed it forward, that we have a tour of the building on Memorial Drive. And I noticed that in our emails this week that we had a survey regarding the dates that we were available to do that. So, I thank you for that, Sarah, for doing that survey for us. And I look forward to having a tour of the building to see what it physically looks like. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ron, I saw your hand. Nope. All set. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. New business. 22-10-6.
Move that the bills warrant S092322, totaling $1,148,108.35 be approved.
Check. Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Check. Could you read into the record the warrants, please?
I will. There is but one warrant this evening that we were asked to take action on. For athletics, there was a spending of $6,977. Food services, $76,750. General expenses, $5,048. Student activities, $8,479. Transportation, $369,858. Telecommunications, $719. For a total of $1,148,108.35.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sarah, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. 22-10-7.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chickapi School Committee and the Chickapi Education Association, Unit A be approved, and the chairperson be authorized.
Doug, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? Don?
Yes, this is on the clubs. The language wasn't in the contract that was agreed upon. There's a stipend that goes with the clubs, and there's units assigned to each club. So, that language is now added. So, by adding, by voting on it tonight, we're just confirming what we agreed to in the negotiations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call. Sarah?
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. 22-10-8.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chickapi School Committee and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, school custodial unit be approved, and the chairperson be authorized.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Don?
Yes, this is on sick buyback. We approved something, not this contract, but the last contract. When we went forward with this contract, inadvertently, the last contract was, the one before was brought forward. We upped the amount that they could buy back, but we forgot to change the number to the right number. So, that's just back to what we agreed to and what was agreed to in the contract prior.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thanks for the clarity. We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Abstained.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one abstained.
Motion carries. 22-10-9.
Move that the first reading of the following policies be approved as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A, fiscal management goals, D1. B, annual budget, D2. C, transfer funds policy, D3. D, federal funds supplement, not supplant policy, D4. E, authorized signatures, D5. F, collection of school funds by employees, D6. G, audits, D8. H, fiscal accounting and reporting, D9. I, payments, D11. J, petty cash accounts, D12. K, revolving accounts policy, D13. L, expense reimbursements, D14.
Tim, can I get a motion?
Motion that the policies take their first reading.
It's a first reading. There'll be no discussion, and we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion passes. We have 22-10-10.
Future location of school administration offices.
Susan?
I'd like to make a motion to table that, please.
Motion made to table. There'll be no discussion, but we'll take a roll call on the table.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. And we'll entertain a motion.
I got new business.
Oh, new business. To my left.
I actually have...
Susan, are you all set?
Sorry, sir.
Can I just make mention, I just want to send a thank you to Sarah and Rebecca and all the others, especially those two women who have been working very hard on our superintendent search. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I have two. I'd like to have the superintendent schedule a salary task force meeting sometime in November so that we can bring the new members up to speed on how we set the salaries. And the second one that I have is I'd like a copy of all grievances in the last year and what the outcomes were. And the second one that I have is I'd like a copy of all grievances in the last year and what the outcomes were.
All set?
And that includes MCID complaints, too.
Okay. Grace?
All set.
Sam, new business?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we can include the city council in on the mass, the future of the location of school administration building so they're in the loop as well. Is there something that we can include them on, at least one member?
Just a point of information, the city council would actually be the authority that could purchase real estate working with the mayor's office. So, as much as there's interest from the school committee to move forward with potential new location, that would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Bouchard, but that would be a recommendation to the mayor and the city council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Chat, any new business?
No, sir.
Moving to my right? All set. Anyone? Sandra?
I'm going to make a recommendation based on the discussion that we had at the facility's subcommittee meeting about the size of Annaberry School, that we invite Mr. Lee Poullet to one of our meetings to share with us so that we have a concrete information that all of us have on the number of new apartments that are planned for the city of Chicopee, what the projected capacity is, and what the expectation is for perhaps increasing the number of students so that we make a wise decision regarding the size of Annaberry. I know that there's going to be, I believe, an eight-story apartment block at the Uniroy Building, and there's other buildings that are being renovated with apartments. So, if we could have that number, it would be helpful to us.
Thank you. Tim? Anyone else to my right, new business? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Recording.